Okay, I would like to call the August 14, 2018 council meeting to order. And I ask the clerk to call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Ms. Schenholster?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum present, so I'm going to ask you to stand for our prayer and pledge. Eternal Father, we're so thankful on tonight for you allowing us to come together and make sure we reason to discuss the business of this city and to do what's good for our constituents. We thank you as we pray right now for our veterans, for our administrative people that go day to day in making sure that the operations go forth. We thank you for our military on tonight, God. We thank you for all that everybody do to make up this world and to make it a better place in order to live. It is these and many more blessings we ask your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I would like to invite the leadership of Georgia Military College to the podium to share their progress over the past year and to share their plans for the upcoming year.
Thank you, Mary. I appreciate the opportunity for us to be here tonight. If you all don't mind, I thought I'd introduce who we have here tonight with us first. Of course, there's a couple folks you know. Colonel Pam Grant, who is the principal of our preparatory school. Right behind her is Dr. Steve Greer. Dr. Greer is the associate principal number two in our preparatory school. To his right, Dr. Laura Booth, right there. Laura is the dean of the Milledgeville College campus, and she'll talk about the Milledgeville College campus tonight. And then as a part of her team, she's got Colonel Steve Pitt. Colonel Steve Pitt is the commandant of cadets of the college cadets. So Pam, do you want to introduce the other guest?
Yes, we have two special guests with us tonight. I shared with you last year that we began an exchange program with the Royal Hospital School. We're in our second year, but we're in our first time of having two students from the Royal Hospital School. So all the way from the United Kingdom, we have Cadet Sergeant George Nichols, right here, and then we have Cadet Sergeant Lottie Gilby. So we are so thrilled. They've already been here about three weeks, and they've gone on lots of different excursions, and they've been going to class, and they have just been a joy to have. We were just so excited to have them.
And the other two cadets?
And these are two of our finest juniors, and they actually went and spent five weeks over at the Royal Hospital School this summer in an immersion program. And they had went last year for 10 days, so this was their second trip. So we have Melinda Steele, and we have Emily Arndt, two of our finest.
So we just wanted to let you know that we have in the midst here of our city two guests from the United Kingdom, both George and Lottie, and we're glad to have you here. Thanks for being here, you two. Mary, what I'd like to do, if I could, some of this you've heard before, I'm just going to quickly go through it, but I'd like to, the way we'll take this through tonight is I'll be the first briefer. I'll give the broad overarching view of Georgia Military College as it is in the state of Georgia. Since we now have 15 campuses spread across the state of Georgia with our, obviously our main campus here, not the largest, but the main campus with all the administrative staff and about 330 full-time employees right here in Milledgeville at this campus, and then about another 250 employees across the state of Georgia. So I'll talk about the entire institution. Follow behind me then will be Dean Booth. Dean Booth will talk about specifically the junior college Milledgeville campus. Behind her will be Colonel Steve Pitt. He will talk about the college, the junior college corps cadets. And then Colonel Pam Grant will just mention the preparatory school. So I'm the only one who'll be talking outside of the Milledgeville area, but I'll just give you the perspective of the college and what it's doing. And obviously, all the administrative staff, support, the online campus, everything located right here inside of Milledgeville. Our mission statement, ma'am, stays the same, has not changed. The key thing I just really want to point out, as you look at that mission statement, we really do feel we have a key mission of developing contributing members of society. You know, there's a lot of educational institutions have high admitting standards. You've got to do a lot to get it, to take standardized testing to get in, write essays and everything else. We take a different approach. All you have to do is show up with a GED, and you are an accepted college student at Georgia Military College. And then we'll do some placement testing there to see whether you need any learning support classes before we put you into college-level classes. But you are automatically enrolled at our college if you have a GED in your hand. So that's a big, big difference that we do. And then, of course, now we also offer a four-year degree for technical school graduates. So if you're a technical school graduate from the state of Georgia, and you want to go get your four-year degree, you can come finish your last two years with us. And then if you want to participate in the Reserve Officer Training Corps and get commissioned as a lieutenant in the United States Army, or just have the military experience, you can also do that with us. And again, Steve will talk about that. We only offer that here at our Milledgeville campus. The next thing is our vision statement. And the key thing about our vision statement is we, the top three things, we believe that we're here about producing character-based education. And we put a lot of focus and time talking about the development of the character of each of our individual students. We're not interested in just educating them. We're interested in giving them a character-based education. And then the second two things is helping change lives. That's what we're about. Our mission in life is, is not to provide the most brightest and most capable and most well-funded students in the state of Georgia education. There's a lot of great schools that can do that. Ours is to help change lives, to find those who perhaps are disadvantaged, haven't had the opportunities, and bring them into our school and give them that so that they can attain a two-year degree and then move on to get their four-year degree after that. Our location, just this past year, we've opened up in two more locations. So we now are spread at 15 locations across the state of Georgia. We, in fact, this coming Friday, will go back to Fayetteville, Georgia, and do a groundbreaking to further expand, almost double the size of our campus there that we started four years ago, just because the number of students keep growing so much out there. So this Friday, we'll be doing that out in Fayetteville, Georgia. We started off, when I got here, at about a $43 million program. In the last five years, we've brought it up to about a $77 million program. Nine percent of that money comes from the state of Georgia. The other 91 percent, we self-generate through tuition at the school. So we pretty much are a self-sustaining entity here in the state of Georgia. Our number of college students, we'll talk about that, but you can see what it is currently this past year, doing very, very well. Representing the state of Georgia, one of the key things you'll see there, if you look at all the different counties, 159, we have students coming from 146 of them taking classes with us. So we very much are now spread across the state of Georgia with students literally from every county except for those few. And we're looking at, we're trying to recruit right now, you can see the little white spots where they are. Those are the counties we don't have a student from yet. And it's over in the southwest, you can see up in the north, and then just those other two down near Savannah. But that's generally where we are now. So 92 percent of the counties have a student taking a class with us from across the state of Georgia. So we're very well represented in the state. This is our enrollments. This is just the last four years, but again, our enrollments continue to grow each year. We're real excited about that because we do believe that we really are providing those opportunities for students who need the ability to get a college education. Enrollment numbers here, this is a little bit now of additional information. The female student population still tends to, like most colleges, be a little higher than the male. We are predominantly a minority school. We're federally recognized as a PBI, a predominantly black institution, because that's the predominant ethnicity of the students that attend our college. And then you can see our transfer and graduation rate. That's above national average, so we feel very, very good about what we're doing there. As far as dual enrollment goes, you've heard of that program. Four years ago, when we first looked into this, we had 104 students, or 107 that first year. This past year, we had 3,205 across the state of Georgia. We are now partnered with over 130 high schools in Georgia. So dual enrollment is, a lot of high schools are partnering with us, and again, it's because we very much take approach of being customer-serviced and trying to work with them to provide those opportunities for high school students that are interested in taking simultaneous college courses with high school courses. And as you can see, this year, we had about 100 of those 3,000 actually complete all the requirements and receive an associate degree the same day they received their high school degree. And so we feel pretty good about that. So we really are doing a lot to get after what Governor Deal said is one of his complete college Georgia initiatives. He's got the nine, and this is one of them, and we right now are the number-one provider of any institution in the state of Georgia for dual enrollment. Whereas we stay very affordable, again, we have worked real hard to keep our tuition and fees about the same for the last five years, and we work real hard, too, to provide scholarships for where it's needed. You can see this year, we are giving out to college students just over 2.7 million, predominantly here in the Milledgeville campus area. And then, of course, most of our students, again, you might imagine, because they do come from more disadvantaged and lower-income families, are receiving financial aid. We find about three-fourths of our students are also Pell-qualified, meaning their families make $25,000 or less during the year. Tuition and fees, you can see the time period. I've been the president, we were charging when I first got here, you can see $5,249. Five years later, we've only increased it by $439. So we really do work hard to keep the, very affordable for a student who makes that decision to be able to, in fact, do that. The articulation agreements, it's a fancy word. It means if I go to school with you, will all my credits transferred to the school I go to next? And the answer is yes. We have 46 colleges and universities, four-year colleges and universities, that have signed those agreements with us. Georgia College State University in town, Mercer University, both public and private have done this. We have them across the state of Georgia, obviously. The key thing there is 42 of them say, if you go to Georgia Military College and graduate with a degree and maintain about a 2.5 average, then we, in fact, will guarantee your admission into our college. And we have here within Milledgeville, and Laura, Dr. Booth can talk about that, that we have quite a few that take advantage of that to go to Georgia College State University since we have that agreement with them. And then the technical colleges, the last four that we don't have an agreement with, where we've got in the process being done and will probably be signed before the end of this year. But that allows the technical college student to transfer their credits to us in order to go after the Bachelor of Applied Science, the four-year degree we give. Expansion, since we briefed you last summer, well, I guess I should talk BAS first. The BAS degree, as you can see, we had our first 15 graduates this year. We have another 117 in the queue, working through it. We offer it in those three areas. And again, the BAS degree is one that is not offered over at Georgia College State University. Any other four-year college in the state of Georgia that's co-located near where we have a campus, if they offer a BAS, we do not offer it. So that we don't, we're not trying to set up a competition thing. We want to complement and be a resource provider, not a competitor, with the educational system here in Georgia. This is the campuses since last time we talked that have either opened or in the process of expanding. So the bottom two are two new campuses we've opened here in this calendar year, both down in Albany and in Zebulon. Albany is a great program. That's a partnership down there. Dr. Parker, who's been the longest-serving technical college president in the state of Georgia, has partnered with us. We are on his campus, providing the BAS opportunity to the students coming out of his technical school, really reaching out to his alumni. But he sees that as a great partnership between the two of us. So if you go down to the Albany campus, you'll see Albany Technical College and right below it, Georgia Military College, co-located, working in tandem. Again, if it's a course they offer and they make available, we don't offer it then. Again, so we're complementing, not competing, in the educational system here. Accolades, we continue to get just some great accolades for what our faculty and staff in the junior college do. We feel really good about that, and as you can see, that rating this past year, 14th best community college in the nation, number one in the state of Georgia through best schools, we felt great about. Meaning we're on track, still doing that, which we should be doing, in the service to students and their parents. What have we done over the last eight years? You can see right there, 100 percent growth in our number of college graduates. In the end, it's about getting them through and getting them their degree. And so we're on, we're doing that very, very well. We feel good about the progress we've made there. Most colleges would be challenged to see that kind of growth in the number of graduates in an eight-year period. So the success rate there continues. And then this is the last one to just share with you, and then I'm going to turn it over to Dean Booth. But this part here, we have those four initiatives up top. We established shortly after I took over as president. And then down below, the corresponding, how are we doing in each of those? But as you can see, in the last five years, for four and a half years, we literally have increased graduates by 20 percent. So that's a great upward trend, when most colleges in the United States right now are seeing a downward trend in student population, therefore also in graduation numbers. We, in fact, are continuing to see a 20 percent increase. I mean, we're averaging just over about 4 percent a year increase. Enrollments continue to grow. We're on track right now, looking at our numbers across the state of Georgia. All our other campuses have already started classes, and we're on trajectory to increase that again this year right now. Not by a huge amount, but it's more than we had this time last year. So as long as we can retain them and keep them engaged, we'll see that continuing to grow. We have reorganized a lot of things, and then our foundation, which provides us some critical scholarship support, we put a lot of focus there, and we literally have doubled that in the last five years, which was right at about $11 million when I got here, now at $23 million. And we see that in the amount of scholarships that we're able to award. Over $200,000 more was given out in scholarship funds this year than we did just last year. So a great increase in what we're able to do to help students and their families. So that's the college from the big picture. I'm going to turn it over to Dean Booth to talk about it, the micro level here now in Milledgeville, which I think a lot of you would be very interested in. But the key messages I want to leave you is the college is healthy, we're doing well, we've got a good presence across the state. The statistics continue to demonstrate and show that our faculty and staff are doing what we're asking them to do. Students are continuing to come to take advantage of what we do provide. So we're real excited about that. And I'll turn it over to Dean Booth.
Well? Okay. For the Milledgeville campus, we did have an increase in enrollments of about 2 percent over last year's fall terms. We had about 1,400 students and cadets. We had a 21 percent increase in graduates during the last year. So this past year, the Milledgeville campus had 250 graduates. 36 percent of the students in the Milledgeville campus are Baldwin County residents, and the top three programs of study are general studies, pre-nursing, and business administration. We also have 28 international and student athletes. 48 percent of our students are female, and 48 percent are minority. The next slide is our dual enrollment growth. Most of our dual enrollment students come from GMC Prep School, and Baldwin High School is the next largest number of dual enrollment students, 25 percent. We actually do teach some dual enrollment classes on the Baldwin High School campus, and we had a total of 406 dual enrollment students last year, which is a 4 percent increase. We also had 39 dual enrollment students graduate with their associate's degree this past May. Three of those students were from GMC Prep School. So the rest of them were between Baldwin High School, Jones County, and Early College. Does anybody have any questions for me before I turn it over to Colonel Pitt? No? Okay. Then I will give you Colonel Steve Pitt.
Good evening, everybody. As the President said, I'm the Commandant Dean of Students for the Corps of Cadets. I'm some clicker. Awesome. So as the Commandant, we house the Corps of Cadets. And as the President said, Milledgeville campus is the only campus that does have the Corps of Cadets. And also, those are the only students, cadets, that live actually on any campus at Georgia Military College. So we have bow barracks, and we have 254 spaces there. We've done some expansions, can go up to 272 right now, members joining the Corps. Right now, we're projecting about 272. That's what we have invited in to participate in the Corps. We have five programs within the Corps of Cadets, and I'll briefly explain to them. So Military Junior College is one of four. Just a little history, it goes back to the Vietnam War and its establishment of the early commissioning program. We were not able to produce officers fast enough, so in Title X, the law that governs, we were authorized to commission officers after two years. And GMC is one of those institutions that can do it. So our early commissioning program cadets will come to Georgia Military College, they'll do a two-year program in the senior ROTC. So what happens when they graduate from high school, we send them off to what's called basic camp. It's not like basic training, but it's where they get their first two years of college ROTC there at that camp, about one month at Fort Knox, Kentucky. Then they'll come back to GMC, and they'll be a junior technically in ROTC, Reserve Officer Training Corps, but they'll be a freshman academically. So at the end of those two years, they'll earn their commission when they graduate, and then they have the ability to go on to a follow-on institution where they have to achieve their bachelor's degree in two years following that, and that's the early commissioning program. Another great program I'm excited about is the State Service Scholarship Program. So these are individuals that serve in the Georgia National Guard or the Georgia Air National Guard. So with their basic contract, if they meet some requirements academically, then the state will pay for them to come to school for the two years while they serve in the Georgia National Guard and the Georgia Air National Guard. We actually have soldiers that are part of the program, they deploy. So when we have a hurricane, they get orders, mobilization orders, and they go out and deploy. And we actually, this spring, we had about 29 participate in training, and some will actually deploy in October, November with the 48th, when it deploys to its mission in Afghanistan. So we'll keep track of those soldiers as they deploy, and then when they come back, they'll join the team and finish their program and earn their associate's degree at GMC. Have athletic program, so the football players, they are part of the Corps of Cadets as well. So they come in as part of the program, structured discipline, great relationship with the coach, and we work together to get those young men academically prepared, mentally and physically prepared to go on to follow-on institutions at their time at GMC. We also have academy scholars. So we have about 25 academy scholars this year. We are partnered with the United States Military Academy and partnered with the United States Coast Guard Academy. And what they do is individuals that might not quite be there academically, they send them here for intense academics. They're already in school. They reported on two August, and Dr. Booth there is putting them in math class. So they started pre-calc on Monday last week. Where our average student may be taking 14, 15 hours, those young men and women are taking 21, 24, 26 hours. They will almost have an associate's degree when they leave at the end of their first year at GMC. So it's a great program. We're also in October, the Air Force Academy, they've come and done their preliminary meetings with us, and they're coming in in October, and we're going to brief them, the head of their Falcon Foundation, and hopefully we'll start the Air Force Academy here next year. And we're in preliminary with the United States Merchant Marine Academy. So it's a great opportunity for us to get individuals into Georgia Military College and then go off and serve in our service academies. And then our last cadet is a civic leader. These are individuals who want the structure, they want the discipline, they want the training. They come here, no military obligation. So they come to GMC because they need that little extra structure and discipline to help them prepare. And these, all of them are, but these are our servant leaders. These are the ones that are connected out in the community. We're partnered with the Georgia State Patrol with internships, where our cadets go out and actually patrol. It's a paid internship. We have individuals work in the Board of Registars, Chamber of Commerce. So it's an opportunity for our cadets to get engaged in the community and learn from you all exactly what they need to do to be successful going forward, and then go out and serve in those communities. So civic leaders are just a great group of young men and women coming here, and they're going to go back to the community and serve them well. Next slide, sir, please. Athletics, we are doing extremely well in athletics. Currently, we have men and women's soccer, men and women's rifle team, oh, excuse me, well, it is men and women's rifle team, men and women's golf team. So this year, we're going to start women's golf. So we're excited about that program. We have men and women's cross-country. So it's just a great opportunity for our young men and women to be a part of college athletics. So we participate in the Georgia Collegiate Athletic Association and the National Junior College Athletic Association. Golf team last year, we're national champions. This year, they did extremely well and finished up third. And then you can see across the board, we're just doing great things there with our young men and women and collegiate athletes, a lot of All-Americans. What you don't see is where we're successful through the academics on these young men and women going forward. I think last year, Coach Williams had 19 individuals sign with the Division I, Division II schools going forward, scholarships, taking the GMC message abroad and then participating as a member of teams all around the state. And right now, he's got a new group, and we've got five or six that already have offers. So they're going to come here, get their academics, get to the level they need to do to go to be successful at these follow-on institutions. So we're just excited about the Corps of Cadets, our programs. We're growing. President's goal is right now 300. So we're going to continue to grow and bring young men and women, teach them character, teach them structure, discipline, and they're going to go out and serve, whether they choose to go in the military, whether they choose to go out and be civilians, go into private sector. That's what we're all about here at GMC. Do I have any questions? Thank you. I'll be followed by Colonel Pam Grant, principal for the prep school.
And if you look in your practice on the left-hand side, in the very back aisle, is the football stadium. If you want to come watch a junior college football game, we kick off next Thursday night with our first game. So it's going to be very, very exciting for us. If you have never seen the team, it's a, I don't know, 93 percent this year, African-American team, where it normally is. These are young men that never had the opportunity to go to a regular college because their grades are that bad. They cannot qualify academically. They're phenomenal, absolutely phenomenal. And if you want to come out and watch them, our cornerback, who is...
Is going to Georgia.
Thursday, he's going to tell us. I see them again tonight after I leave here, but we'll find out Thursday. He would not tell me the other night. So Pam is after him, a couple others are too, but he's number one in the nation quarterback, ranked number one.
Yes.
He's that good. And he is from Georgia. So anyway, it's an amazing team. If you get the opportunity, we'd love to come, we'd love to have you as our guest to come to a game. If you want to let us know, please do, and we'll get you seats and take care of you. We'd love to have you come and watch these young men out there and see their families who all come, I mean, they come from across Georgia to support these young men out there playing because they get so excited for them. But as Steve said, 23 signed this past spring, 23 out of a group of 27 that were signed to go on to play football.
Fantastic.
Their grades up there, we move them on.
Fantastic.
Good evening. I would also like to add my words of thanks for letting me come. I'm always thrilled to tell you about the year that we just had, and we're so excited for the year that we have ahead. This past year, we had some wonderful milestones. I'm just going to hit a few of the highlights. I hope all of you know that we have a fabulous fine arts program at the prep school. So many of our students are involved in it, and the only part of that fine arts that we didn't have, we had theater, we had band, but we were missing visual arts. And this past year, we added visual arts, and it really just surpassed everything we thought that it was going to be. All of our students in grades six through eight had a chance to take a visual arts class, as well as our seniors, and every child had the opportunity to be involved in either the middle school or the high school art club. They did a lot of projects. You'll see a few of my favorites up there. We did the Pin Wheels for Peace, where the students wrote their catchphrases for what they thought would help all of us live peacefully together. And then we participated in a Nationwide Peace Day, and they made the peace symbol outside the Old Capitol Building. And then my two favorites were the Portraits of Veterans and the Law Enforcement Appreciation Project. And what we did was, we had all of the people who had served in our military, we got their pictures, and if we had... pictures and if we had family members or people in the community that we knew. And then we also, for Law Enforcement Day, we did our law enforcement at GMC and all around the city and the county. Our students drew portraits of all of these people and then we had an art show for the veterans and for law enforcement and we had so many people come in and they just did a phenomenal job and we just, we loved reaching out to the community and sharing that with them. So it's just been a phenomenal year with our visual arts program and we're very excited for the second year of that. I'm sure y'all all know that we have ribbons on our uniforms at GMC and we had a new one this year. It's called the Legacy Ribbon. We're very big on tradition at GMC and at the prep school. We have a lot of families who have a lot of members that go from generation to generation and this year, we decided to recognize them with what we call our Legacy Ribbon. And to be a legacy, you have to have an immediate family member that has graduated from the prep school. So the first time that we recognized them, we had 132 students who were legacies and you got a ribbon. And if you had more than one, you got a bronze number to put how many you had. And the most we had, we had some students that had four family members. We actually had four students who had four family members that graduated. And our oldest legacy dated back to 1889. So that's a tradition that we plan to continue every year. You've heard a lot about dual enrollment tonight. Prep school has a very successful dual enrollment. You can see our numbers up there. 68% of our sophomores, 61% of juniors, and 83% of our seniors participated. You can see the number of classes and the quarter credit hours they earned. So it is just a fabulous program and our students just really embrace it and of course really helps their parents when they go off to school and they've got all these college courses behind them that their parents haven't had to pay for. As Dr. Booth said, we have four students in the prep school who simultaneously earned their high school diploma and their associate's degree. And we've got seven, possibly eight, on track to do it this year. So we're very excited about that. In addition to our successful dual enrollment program, we've got a fabulous AP program. Three of our four AP classes exceeded both the state and global pass rates. You can see AP Lang exceeded for the seventh year in a row, AP Bio for the sixth year in a row. And our AP Calculus students, they set a record with 80% of the class having the highest pass rate that we've ever had for that course. So we're very proud of our AP courses also. Whoops, now it's really going fast. There we go. Okay. Might have to get you, there we go. This next program, the Hyatt Venture Leadership Program, basically this is just our name for what we call a Boy Scout troop. Y'all all know that when young men participate in Boy Scouts, especially if they attain their Eagle Scout, it is something that is going to benefit them for the rest of their life. And we found that we had a lot of boys who wanted to participate, but it was a real hardship on their parents to make that seven o'clock meeting every Thursday. So we worked it into our schedule where we have a scout program for our sixth graders this past year that met on Tuesday and Thursday and they did their merit badges and did all the things they needed to do for that. So then all the parents had to do was take them to their weekend things, like the camping trips. And they did lots of fun things. They canoed down the Okeefinooki. This summer, they actually took a trip and went snorkeling in Key Largo. And we started this program out with 15 students and we had a 100% retention rate. All 15 of them finished the year and that's much higher than the national rate of 70%. What we're really excited about is, I'm sure you know that the Boy Scouts are now accepting girls. And so this year, we're going to, in addition to having our seventh graders still involved, we're going to open it back up to our sixth graders and it's going to be open to boys and girls. So we're just really excited about this Hyatt Venture Leadership Program and we feel like our goal is to make, help every one of these students complete their Eagle Scout. So that's one that we're really going to be watching over the next several years and we're very excited about. We've kind of already talked about our exchange program with the Royal Hospital School, that we had the three students that went over for five weeks for the immersion program, then we had 10 more students and two of our faculty members that went over for 10 days. And we're absolutely thrilled to have these two young ladies with us right now. This is a program that we hope to have for years to come and have many of our students be a part of. We ended our year on a very positive note with the groundbreaking for our prep school annex. And in July, we started on the renovation of Jenkins Hall. And both of these, we hope, will open their own path to open next summer in the summer of 2019. In our world that begins at 3:15 after school, our students have also excelled. You see that we had three state championships last year. We had our Boys Cross Country for the fourth year, in the fourth time in six years. We had our Literary State Champs, which were four consecutive years. And then we had our U.S. Army Mixed Raider Team, who were the state champs for the third time in four years. And the thing that I am most proud of is that these are not all in one area. You see that military, which is our middle name, has a state championship, academics with literary, and then of course, sports. So we're very proud of all of these young people. And then you see underneath that we have a lot of region championships and also individual We had a wonderful class this past year, the Class of 2018 that graduated. They were smaller than our usual class, but they've been smaller since the day they came in, in the sixth grade. We had 41 of them. They had 100% graduation rate and that was the ninth year in a row that we've had 100% graduation rate, of which we're very proud. 51% of this class, our 21 students, earned over $1.2 million toward their post-secondary education and that does not include Hope and Zell Miller. One of the things we're most proud of, because this is the highest percentage we've ever had, is that 76% of our students earned Georgia's Hope Scholarship. And so of course, that's really going to help their parents out this year as they matriculate to college and we are very proud of that statistic. We had one young man who received a direct appointment to the United States Coast Guard Preparatory Academy. And we had five others that received full ROTC scholarships to the colleges and universities of their choice. And of course, we're extremely proud that 40 of 41 members of the Class of 2018 are now college freshmen in 26 different colleges and universities across six different states. And we had one young man who chose to serve his country, but he has promised me that he will go to college in the near future. So we're very proud of the Class of 2018. We were also extremely proud of our graduation speaker for the prep school. You see him pictured up there with General Caldwell and myself and Chairman of our Board, Randy New. His name is Major General Ronald L. Johnson and he's a professor of engineering at Georgia Tech. And he is the civilian aide to the Secretary of the Army for the state of Georgia. And he just did a beautiful job for us and we were very honored to have him. We're going to look ahead to this year, y'all, I'm sorry, this is last year's, I'm sorry. Of the percent, you know that we have a lot of families who can't afford to financially send their children to the prep school. And so we are so blessed that we are able to honor needs-based scholarships to these families. Now unfortunately, we cannot meet all of the need that there is. You can see that 42% of the validated financial need was met this past year through scholarships. Our goal is to one day meet at least 80% of that need. But we had 212 students who were awarded a Presidential, which are the institution scholarships, or a foundation scholarship. 54% of the students that applied were awarded some money. And then the average amount that the students were awarded was $1,119. So all total, last year, we awarded $555,100. Now, I've got to say a big thank you to all of you because the meal that you give to GMC, every dime of that meal goes toward these scholarships to help students attend our school. And so we are very appreciative of that. And I would also like to share with you that our foundation and General Caldwell have been working very hard and for this school year, we have already awarded $689,086. So that's $139,000 more in scholarship money that we awarded than last year. So we were absolutely thrilled that we were able to help more students this year and our plans are for that number to rise every single year. This is about this year, school year 2018-19. We have our largest enrollment ever. We have 675 students. And of course, 80 of those are our fourth and fifth graders. We have two classes of fourth and two classes of fifth, which was our goal. And we have 80 students and they've gotten off to a great start. But we also have more students in our other grades, so we are really at capacity right now. We are split straight down the middle with girls and boys this year. You can see our breakdown is about the same as it was last year. We are 71% Caucasian, 21% African-American, and then about 8% other ethnicities, I believe it's six other ethnicities. And you can see the breakdown, that 74% of our students live in Baldwin County and 26% live out of the county. We're looking forward to a great year. We've gotten off to a great start. And does anybody have any questions about the prep school? Well, thank you again for letting me come and share. We really appreciate it and we really appreciate your generosity with the meal that helps so many of our students attend the prep school.
Yeah, and that's all we have. I do want to thank you again for allowing us to have the opportunity to update you on an annual basis like this and express our appreciation for the support the city gives. I'll make one more pitch for the junior college football team. We would love to have you as our guest. If you just, anyone of you, any one of you can just send me a note and we'll make sure we get you all taken care of. We'd love to have you come out there and see these young men who are in your community attending school here for two years. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you Lieutenant General Caldwell and your staff, Dr. Booth, Colonel Grant, and that Major Greer? Correct? And Colonel Pitt. Thank you so much for coming out. Thank you, young ladies that are enjoying the United States and we are glad to have you here and our own students who went out to visit the United Kingdom. So we're so thankful. And everybody here knows Ms. Joby Shields, W-13, what is it, W-13 MAC, but she's now a part of GMC. I don't know if that transition happened before, but she is now a part of GMC and we're so grateful that you all came out. And we are so excited here at the City of Milledgeville for what you do in our community. We're grateful and we're most proud that you're continuing to grow and excel and that the city is able to be a part and take part in what you do. And I'm thankful. You guys have opened your arms and welcomed me tremendously to all events and I'm so glad you invited the residents to the city council to come out. Mr. Steve, you going to give me a break? But thank you guys so much tonight for coming out. All right, thank you. I'm going to move on through. You all have received a copy of the July 24 Council meeting minutes. Are there any corrections? If there are no corrections, do I hear a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt. Second motion.
Okay, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Dr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Walden.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Mullins.
Aye.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are approved. We don't have any old business on the agenda tonight, so I'll move to new business and I'll ask the clerk to read Resolution R-1808-038 by caption.
A resolution to authorize a container and cylinder agreement with Allied Universal Corporation for the rental of containers and cylinders used in the water treatment process.
All right, y'all have heard the resolution. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Clerk, to call the roll.
Dr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Walden.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Mullins.
Aye.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
The resolution is approved. At the request of the City Manager, Resolution R-1808-039, authorizing a construction agreement for the newest phase of streetscape is being pulled from the agenda at this time. Once the agreement and all the supporting paperwork is complete, it will be placed back on the agenda for consideration. The next item is Resolution R-18-0840. I will ask the clerk to please read the resolution by caption.
A resolution to authorize an easement with the Baldwin County Board of Commissioners to grant to them a portion of the City of Milledgeville right of way for North Wilkerson Street between the paved portion of the road and the front of the Baldwin County Courthouse.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion?
Motion, we adopt.
Second. The resolution is, I mean, I'll have the clerk call the roll, please.
Dr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Walden.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Mullins.
Aye.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
The resolution is approved. I understand that we need to amend the agenda for another resolution to be considered. I ask for a motion to amend the agenda to add Resolution 12-1804-041.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Clerk, to call the roll.
Dr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Walden.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Mullins.
Aye.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
I'll need, ask the clerk to read the resolution by caption.
A resolution to authorize Mayor Mary Parham Copeland on behalf of the City of Milledgeville to execute a real estate sales transaction for the sale of property located at 901 South Wayne Street, formerly known as the Shaw Building, to Thomas Preston Investments LLC or its assigns and for other purposes.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion?
We approve. Second.
I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Dr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Walden.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Mullins.
Aye.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
All right, this concludes the items on the agenda. Is there any further business to discuss?